I would like to call to order the February 6th Regular Board Meeting of the Moundsview School Board. Good evening and welcome. The first order of business is item 1.2, Adoption of the Agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move to item 2.1, Student Representative Reports. I would like to welcome up our student representatives from Irondale and Moundsview. And I don't know who drew the straw to start tonight. Okay, it looks like Moundsview. Welcome.
Hello. This is a brief report of everything that's been going on at Moundsview. We had a pretty great start to our second semester. So, in the beginning of January, we had our Moundsview Wrestling Captains. They actually visited one of our sponsored kindergarten classes. I think it was at Pike Lake. So, they got to chat with kindergarteners about the wrestling team, and they signed posters, and they got to show off some moves with them. So, hopefully encouraged them to join the wrestling team in high school. We also recently had our Boys and Girls Nordic Teams, both of them, they want to emphasize, took second at all conference, which is pretty impressive. We've also had a start to our mock trial team. We actually had four students recognized as outstanding attorneys and outstanding witnesses: Evan Hall, Ella Kay, Jack Gilzrude, and Hannah Yang. We also have kind of a major community project going on at Moundsview right now. So, we have a club called Volunteer Outreach Club, which is actually partnering with Crutches for Africa, which is an organization located in Denver, Colorado, which basically takes surplus mobility devices to Africa. So, students are able to donate their crutches, or their walkers, or their canes, walking boot slings, and they're able to just bring them to school, in the school MAC, or in the Commons. And I think it's still going on right now, but they'll be shipping those out next month, I believe, which is awesome. We also had something really impressive. We had a senior in my class, Emmy Ren, selected as one of only two students in Minnesota to represent our state at the US Youth Senate Program in Washington DC, which I believe has like a .08% acceptance rate, very impressive. And she also is going to win a $10,000 scholarship to any school of her choice, and she's going to meet with the highest level elected and appointed officials in the US. And I believe she's also the head of our state steering committee. So, it's really nice to have someone so talented in our YIG program as well. And then, this past weekend, we talked about this a little bit, we also had the SEC Music Festival, which I saw some of you guys there. It was very successful. We had our honors concert on Sunday. We had, I think, about 20 students in total from orchestra, band, and choir. And we had such amazing clinicians, and we received a lot of great comments from them. And then, on Monday, we had students from all of our advanced ensembles perform and receive feedback. And I heard that everyone received superior and excellent remarks. So, yeah, we're really grateful for the music teachers we have at Moundsview. They're truly excellent. And then, for Student Council, we have Winter Week coming up in a week or so. We finally had some voting going on for Spirit Days. So, we're doing PJ Day, Wicked Day, I believe, Alphaba versus Glinda, which I believe is pink versus green, Color by Grade, and One Herd. And something we're implementing this year for the Pet Fest is, we're going to be doing a Latin dance performance, and we're also having a by-grade level karaoke lip sync battle. And then, we're also going to have our winter dance the Saturday after, which is called Winter Wonderland, and a hot chocolate bar will be available. And we also have Moundsview Shakespeare, As You Like It, this weekend. I believe the shows will be Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, with two shows on Saturday. And Decca is also doing a date night fundraiser this weekend, which is basically just parents drop off their kids at, I think, Call's Court, and they're going to have some games, and crafts, and snacks, and pizza. And then, in honor of Black History Month, our Black Student Union is hosting a fundraiser next week during all the lunches, I believe, and they're selling t-shirts as a charity donation to local black businesses in Shoreview. And we also have our National Honors Society Subcommittee, Music for Moundsview, which I talked about before. It's basically a benefit concert fundraiser. They're beginning their audition process, and they're going to be taking strings, winds, ensembles, and piano and voice. And theater is also kicking off their Mean Girls musical, and they're hosting auditions right now. And we also have the NHS Art Fair, which is also a subcommittee of our NHS chapter. We have a very, very large honor society. So, students are now able to submit artwork in all types of mediums up until the 21st. And the art fair will be on March 1st on Saturday, and it'll be about five hours long. And we also have, lastly, we have some volunteering events. We will have Moundsview kids partnering with the Pike Lake Kindergarten Center this weekend. They're hosting a Valentine's Dance. So, kids will be helping with face painting, carnival games, and crafts. And we actually have another subcommittee on our National Society Chapter. It's called the Mental Health Walk Committee, which I'm sure you've heard of. They're going to be working with the St. Ramsey County of Public Health this year. And I believe, they just said today that the Mental Health Walk will be on May 3rd, and I believe it'll be at Long Lake. And students are now able to submit poetry or short stories about mental health until April. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Irondale.
Hello. Okay, thank you for having us. Just a few quick things about Irondale. So, this month, while we're currently in our Spirit Week, so we're leading up to the Winter Dance, the Snowball. Our theme is Frosted Fairy Tale, and that's going to be on Saturday. So, we're planning to have all of Student Council, not, hopefully all of Student Council there, to help us set up basically all of Saturday. And then, the dance will be at 8:00 PM. And yeah, we're super excited for that. And then, we also have had our Spirit Week, where students and staff have just been like dressing up for it. So, we've had like Wicked Day. My math teacher was dressed as Alphaba, and it was just super fun. And then, yeah. We've also been having our thrift store put on by Student Council. So, in the mornings before school, well, we've been collecting clothes for it, but in the mornings before school, students have been like shopping at the thrift store, and it's been a great way to earn some revenue for council, and just to make sure that we're not like contributing to landfills and stuff with clothes. And yeah. And then, we also have a few like new clubs at our school, which has been really awesome. So, Model UN is starting. We haven't had a delegation at Irondale before, but they're starting up from my Spanish teacher, actually. And we've had a few people join, and yeah, we're very excited about that. And then, we're also, a Women in Law Club is starting, where women, or girls throughout Irondale are able to like come together to meet, to learn about like, like possible jobs in the law field, and like what law really like looks like as a career. And we're also having some guest speakers, and potential internship opportunities, and things like that, which has been a great experience. And then, also, we had our Students vs. Staff Basketball Game, I think, last month, and the students won. But, because there was like a student who was not supposed to be on the court, we had to do a rematch, which we did during nighttime on Wednesday, where the staff actually won this round. But, yeah. So, that's been fun. And then, also, speech has been having some exciting tournaments. So, they had the Medieval Medley, where 600 competitors came from a bunch of high schools around Minnesota. I think it was at Irondale, because we had our NHS chapter working for that. And then, Irondale finished third in that, which was super exciting for us. And we had like 12 of the Irondale students who placed. And then, we also had the Duluth Tournament over the weekend, where the speech team went to Duluth and just participated in that. And we, I think we placed like sixth in that, which was super exciting. And we also had a ton of Irondale students who finalized. And yeah. And then, some sports things that have been going on. Wrestling, Arlo Brinkman won his 100th wrestling match at the Hastings Meet. So, we're all very excited for him. And then, basketball, girls' basketball has been, or, on February 4th, they hosted their Teacher Appreciation Night. So, teachers got free popcorn and free admission to the game. And yeah. And then, orchestra had their eighth grade collab, oh, I don't know. Okay.
I apologize for the interruption.
No, you're good. Don't worry. And then, they, oh, they had their eighth grade collaboration concert, I think, last week, and they played Fantasia with the eighth grade orchestra. So, that was fun. And that also took place at Irondale. And we also had SEC, which Irondale hosted, so we didn't have school on Monday. But, a bunch of music from, or, like orchestra choir bands from all over came, and they got to like play together. It was a like great music festival. And also, they had like music clinicians who came to like talk with the students, so that was a great, great opportunity for them. And yeah, I think that's it. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you. Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Bye.
All right, Agenda Item 2.2. We'll start with the gifts. Shauna, would you please read?
Yeah, so there were 10 gifts for schools and programs received this period, for a total of $29,674.77. And there were 18 gifts received for the Ralph Frieder Food Shelf this period, for a total of $19,080.85. And it is recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great. Thank you, Shauna. Upcoming meetings. Our next work session will be on Thursday, March 6th at 5:00 PM. And then, due to the upcoming special election that Governor Walz just announced, that was, is on March 11th, Tuesday, which is our normal board meeting night. So, we have just decided this evening, right before the meeting, that the next school board meeting will be on Thursday, March 6th at 7:00 PM. So, we're doing both the work session and the board meeting on March 6th. So, both of those will be here at the District Center. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 2.3, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Diane. Actually, the students really highlighted a couple of things that I wanted. They, they did a lot more, but two things. Emmy Ren, one of two students in the state to have the opportunity to go to the state capitol. So, Emmy's going to be going, visiting with Amy Klobuchar and Tina Smith, senators representing Minnesota. It's the 63rd Annual United States Senate Youth Program, held March 1st to the 8th. It is incredibly competitive. She's just an amazing student, and we're so fortunate that she'll be representing not only Moundsview Public Schools, but the state of Minnesota. So, congratulations, Emmy. Wonderful, wonderful job. And they talked a little bit about the SEC Music Festival. So, incredible, incredible concert Sunday night, wonderful opportunity to see everyone who visited, the bands, orchestras, and choirs from across the conference at Irondale Monday. So, rather than go into all that, I, I just would like to extend a few thank yous. First of all, the folks at, at Irondale, the custodians, our Activities Director, Chris Fink, the administrators, the administrative assistants, every, these events don't just happen. And so, they put a ton of energy and effort into getting ready for that event. To all of our staff on Monday, who were supervising, announcing, guiding kids, making sure they got lunch, and to and from all the areas where they were performing, incredible work. I do want to also mention Moundsview High School, because they're next year's host site. And so, the, the site that hosts the following year always helps with logistics. So, the staff at Moundsview and all of them were helping the logistics for the Irondale event. So, thank you to, to them. The music boosters, they always do a great job. In fact, we're there for the reception Sunday evening, serving food. Wonderful. Thank you for, to them. Schmidt Music helped out with instrument repairs, anybody who needed anything, either Sunday or Monday. So, that was fantastic. And finally, and I said at the concert, most importantly, to our students. I mean, they absolutely are the reason we do this. And, and they were amazing in their performances. It was great to see the energy and excitement, their passion for all that they did all day Monday as well. So, fun seeing them interacting with their peers, and with the clinicians that was mentioned, a couple state clinicians, national clinician that come in and work with our kids. So, thank you to everyone involved. Wonderful event, and we're looking forward to hosting again next year at Moundsview. All right?
All right. Thanks, Superintendent Lennox. We'll now move on to Item 3.0, Approval of the Consent Agenda. I would entertain a motion.
So moved?
Second. The agenda has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, 4.1, Review and Revisions to Policies BG 0303 and EG 3115. And then, Introduction of Policy EG 3116. And I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Lennox and Heidi Danielson, Vice Chair.
Thanks, Diane. The board periodically goes through all of our policies to review our policies, and take a look at any potential for changes needed. And our committee this year, a subcommittee of the board was made up of Alyssa Dear Nelson and myself. And we worked with a education consultant, Amy Jones, who is a previous board member here at Moundsview. And she worked with us on just reviewing all of our policies. So, in the next few months, we'll be bringing some of those changes to board meetings for approval. So, I'm going to talk about the two, the first two policies that we have some revisions to, and then I'm going to hand it over to Superintendent Lennox to talk about our new policy. BG 0303 is a policy formation and adoption policy. And one of the things that we want to revise in there is that policies will receive one reading at a work session, and one reading at a board meeting before being adopted or deleted. That's a slight change to our previous process, where we had two readings at general meetings of the board, and instead, we'd like to dig into them at a work session, and then read one over those at a board meeting. So, that's a proposed change to that. We'll be approving that next month's meeting. And then, Policy EG 3115 is our Electronic Technology Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. This policy covers electronic technology, and since the next policy that we're going to be adopting is our cellphone policy, we want to make reference to that new cellphone policy as part of this Electronic Technology Acceptable Use and Safety Policy. So, we're not changing the content of the policy. Just on the bottom, where we refer to other policies, we're going to include a new EG 3116 Student Cellphone Possession and Use Policy. And again, we will approve this policy for its final revisions at next month's meeting. And then, we'll handle a new one.
Yeah, that's right. The, so, next in sequence, we're adding EG 3116, the cellphone policy. And board members, I know you recall, but for the public, the state legislature is actually requiring all school districts to adopt a specific cellphone policy. As part of that development that we did in the district, the school board worked with administration to gather community feedback. And we used that feedback, then, in the formation of this new policy. Specifically, we sent out surveys to our families, secondary students, and all staff, soliciting their input. More than 3,000 people responded to our surveys, providing insight in what they wanted to see happening in our schools relative to cellphones. In addition, we held two separate community meetings, looking for feedback regarding cellphone use in our schools. That resulted in more than 200 people participating and providing feedback across both meetings. And that data, then, was collected, shared with the District Advisory Committee. That committee, if you recall, had students, it had staff, it had administrators, teachers, everybody was part of that good representative group, met multiple times, ultimately discussing the feedback and making recommendations at the December 10th School Board Meeting, about where they thought that should go, and the policy that needed to be developed. Board members, I know you also engaged the community. You got emails, you got phone calls, you had all kinds of people reaching out, stopping you on the street, wanting to talk about, you know, cellphones. So, all of that was taken. We, all of that information was brought together, and then shared with the committee as we went forward in the formation of the policy. In the end, that policy really resulted in, very similar to what we were currently doing, no access at the elementary, secondary, no instructional time, but they can access cellphones outside of instructional time. So, that has all been written up in, in the form of a policy. Again, it's EG 3116 that will be brought forward. Board members, I know you've had the opportunity to see it a couple of times and discuss, but we will be bringing it back for a second and final reading, then, with the other policies at the next meeting in March.
Great. Thank you both.
Yep.
All right. Moving on to Item 5.1, 2026-27 School Calendar. And I'm going to turn it back over to Superintendent Lennox.
Yep. I, just a lot of talking tonight. So, tonight, we are bringing forward, you know, the district tries to say two years ahead, so people can plan with our, with our calendar. So, we're bringing forward the draft of the 2026-27 School Calendar. The calendar was reviewed by the Joint Policy Committee, and is being brought forward for approval this evening. The way the Joint Policy Committee consists of, of staff, teachers, board members. So, we all took a, a look at this. I can tell you, we've gone through it, certify that it meets all of the statutory and legal requirements necessary for student contact days, as well as our teacher work days. I would note that the calendar has been configured to provide as many five-day weeks as we can. So, those short weeks, I know parents don't love them, teachers don't love them. So, as much as we could have full weeks, we made an effort to do that. Our teaching staff really appreciate that, so they're not breaking up that, that instruction. In addition, the committee made a point to prioritize recognizing as many of the religious holidays as possible, too, in configuring the calendar. So, days off would align to, to those holidays. And, and that is reflected also in the development of this calendar. So, school board, I know you've had the opportunity to review the calendar at the work session tonight, bringing it forward with a recommendation for approval. Again, 2026-2027 school year. And I'd open it up to any board member comments, especially to those of you who may were part of the process.
I would just want to say thank you to MVA, MVEA partners, and the staff that are part of that committee. We have very thoughtful conversations about what will serve our students and our families and our teachers best.
And I really appreciate as well, I mean, year after year, I know this year I was not on the, on the committee, but I really appreciate the, the committee's respect of taking a look at the calendar through the equity lens, and, and just making sure that, again, each student is thought about as we make those really important decisions, so that families don't have to pull their students out of school. It's really important for each student to have the same opportunities to learn, and grow, and develop in our schools. And so, it's, it's, it's always hurts, hurts my heart when students have to be pulled out to celebrate something that's so meaningful for their families. So, I was really, really happy to see that we were able to make those considerations, and, and plan a calendar around each of our families. So, thank you for that.
I would also add, it's nice that we're two years out. There are school districts that don't even have next year's calendar done, let alone two years from now. So, I do appreciate that, also, as a parent and as a board member, that we, we are committed to having the calendar out two years in advance.
So, as Superintendent Lennox mentioned, it is recommended that the board approves the 2026-27 School Calendar. So, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, now, we will move on to Item 6.1, Adult and Summer Program Update. And we'd like to welcome up Carl Brown, Director of Community Education, and Ryan Ling, Principal of Snail Lake. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. As mentioned, tonight, we are here for a summer program update, and kind of a preview. This is the time of year where we are getting ready for our summer programs, and we will likely see you again in August, and be able to talk about all the things that we shared here, and give you updates on how it went, and, and the things we did. Tonight, we're going to talk about two different areas. One is the academic programs that we have, and Ryan will talk about those. And then, I will talk about some of the enrichment classes and camps and clinics we have coming up.
So, yes, even though it's cold tonight, just picture yourself in summertime, and it's warm and wonderful, right? So, Academic Summer School, we've got some dates. There will be July 7th through July 31st for our various programs that I'll talk about here. First of all, it's kindergarten summer school, so our incoming kindergarten students, and they'll be housed at Pike Lake, as they have been for the last several years. Extended Targeted Services, so a general education summer school experience, is going to continue at each of our elementary schools, as well as our middle schools. It looks like Edgewood and Hyview will both be jointly at Edgewood, and then Chippewa students will be at Chippewa. That's really just around some summer construction needs. Then, Extended School Year, or ESY, is really supporting some of our students with special needs and on IEPs. Those are going to be at multiple sites throughout the district. Credit Recovery is going to be at Moundsview High School and the Area Learning Center. And then, lastly, Adult Education Summer School, offerings that are going to be at Silverview. Some of the offerings include ELL, or some of our, our supports for multilingual adults, as well as Career Pathway Courses in the Areas of Technology, Support to Be a Paraeducator, Certified Nursing Assistance, the GED and Diploma. And it also serves as a Pearson Testing Center for our community. So, those are some of our things for Academic Summer School.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to some of the enrichment classes, camps, and clinics. Just kind of the preview on this, March 18th, so right around our spring break time, we will have our summer registration open. We will continue with mailing a catalog to every household in our district. And then, as we build these things out, and actually, we have some new availability in our software to preview programs as they're built. So, things- So things will appear online and we'll have the full catalog, um, online and in place and ready to go for March eighteenth or sooner. Um, kind of starting in age range, we have early childhood. We're going to have some classes, we're kind of working out the details of those. Those typically in the summer are shorter classes, um, pretty fun. We'll also have, um, some informal playdates or just meetups at playgrounds, uh, that parents have really enjoyed. Um, moving on to elementary or incoming kindergartners through, um, elementary age, we're going to continue with our summer day camp at Turtle Lake. Um, those are AM and PM blocks, Monday through Thursday. Every week, um, for eight weeks, we have those running. And then we also have optional Friday field trips. And really, it's a pretty flexible program for families, and it's been successful, um, in that model the last few years. So we will continue again, uh, with, um, that at Chippewa. Last year was our first year with middle school day camps in a similar block schedule. So we had AM and PM blocks at middle schools. Um, last year we did it at two different schools, but with the construction, uh, Ryan mentioned, it will likely be at Chippewa, but we're going to have a single site for that and have about eight weeks of programs with a middle school focus and, and help middle schoolers kind of feel like they're in a middle school program as opposed to older kids in an elementary program. Uh, high school programs, um, a lot of the programs we have, um, either the academic ones, Drivers Ed is pretty popular in the summer. Um, now with some of the changes in the state laws, online and in person. So we'll maintain a couple of in-person classes for students that need the classroom component, and they may also take it, um, online, um, with a provider we work with and there's other ones in our area. Um, a number of sports camps and clinics that are starting to come in, just a lot of times they're the sports, um, kind of that preseason prep or opportunities for, um, added, um, strength and condition programs. The weight rooms will be open, and I know those are popular with, um, athletes or just students in general that like to, um, work out over that time. Um, we are continuing with an overnight summer camp that we are offering in early August for kind of upper elementary, early middle school, um, students. And that will be in our, uh, regular, um, catalog. We'll have more information on that coming up. And then another big program we have, summer music. Um, our summer band and orchestra program will continue with that. That really follows that July seventh through the thirty first program with, um, a big concert, a final season concert, uh, either the thirtieth or the thirty first. And, uh, band I know is planning on their Valley Fair trip, which I can say is almost annual. I think it's going on the third year, uh, pretty popular with that. But there's beginning opportunities for students, um, daytime and evening opportunities across the district. And then we're working on where middle school will be with, um, Highview being closed, but have opportunities at, um, a number of, uh, schools for that. And then lastly, something that we don't directly have, but we hosted in our schools, we will have, uh, Summer Power or School Age Childcare with the YMCA at four of our schools this summer. Typically, it had been three schools, but the need and the demand has been higher. So we, we moved it up to three, or from three schools to four last summer. And the YMCA is anticipating, um, pretty high demand. And I think that aligns with more families either returning back to the offices or needing childcare, or just choosing to have an option for their students. And then, um, just with this as well, um, I know often questions come up. We have a lot of programs and we're pretty proud of what we offer. But in our community, we're lucky, there are a lot of other programs that are City Park and Rex Program, uh, community partners with youth, and a number of different youth serving service, uh, youth-serving organizations in our community offer. So it's something that, um, there's a lot of, uh, great opportunities for kids during the summer when we're not in session.
Great.
Any questions or?
Just one comment for, uh, the board as a reminder and for the public, like, why aren't we at Highview? It's our geothermal project. So if you remember, we were wrapping up at Irondale, we're moving to Highview. So that summer programming is getting moved around a, a little bit as those projects unfold over the next couple of years.
I apologize, I can't remember, um, transportation to a lot of these, uh, pro- I mean, we, we offer so much, and thank you so much for how much we offer, it's just incredible. Um, is there transportation services for, for a lot of these things?
Yep, summer school, ESY, some of those programs, yep, for sure.
Okay, great.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Carl, thank you, Ryan, for being here for the updates.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, next up is seven dot one, superintendent's, uh, mid-year evaluation. Um, so every, um, mid-year, um, the board, um, evaluates, um, Superintendent Lennox and, uh, you know, compares to where he and the cabinet are, um, to the district operational plan goals. And so, um, Heidi and I had the pleasure of meeting with, um, Chris, was it earlier? It was earlier this week already, I'm like, yeah, earlier this week. And so Heidi is going to, um, provide, um, a brief report, um, about our discussion.
Great, thanks, Dan. Uh, as Dan mentioned, uh, twice a year, the board members, uh, complete an evaluation on, on Chris's progress, um, towards our district operational goals, um, and especially the progress towards the outcomes of those. Um, as a board, we operate, operate on policy governance, and we supervise one employee who we, uh, we then, um, allow to manage all of the schools and staff and all the programs. Um, I'm just going to give a very quick overview and summary of, um, the comments that, um, were on this board review. I think some of the highlights for us for this year were, um, an ongoing connection with families and community that we noticed. Um, uh, really, um, looking at improving and, and, uh, looking at student outcomes in all of our programs. Um, we appreciate involving different stakeholders in each of our different, um, operational goals. And we noticed that Chris and his team do a great job, um, with strategic, long-range intentional planning, especially this year around our, um, DOP goals around enrollment and technology security and the audit that we had last year. Um, just personal and leadership comments, we all feel like, uh, Chris is a proactive professional leader. Uh, we appreciate his, um, proactiveness and his, um, in his, uh, eye on fiscal planning and note that, uh, we are a district that's in a really healthy place right now, and we appreciate that. And, um, just are appreciative of all that you do and the staff, um, that you manage across all of our programs and schools. So thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, moving on to item seven dot two, updates. Um, Jim, uh, any updates for AMSD and legislative?
Oh, yes, the, um, the, um, Senate at the Capitol this week. Uh, the House Representatives are back in session, there was an agreement there. So we're looking forward to working with them as they move forward. AMSD's priorities remain the same, uh, additions to the general formula, um, more, um, aid for special ed and ESL, um, supplements for school safety, um, more flexibility and funding to implement the REACT, which is very important to all of us. And so, um, because it's a little compacted this year, um, it's going to be kind of lively and see if they actually, uh, finish up on time in, um, late May. So, um, we expect a lot of action. So, uh, thank you, and we have an AMSD meeting tomorrow morning, so.
All right, thank you, Jim. Shawna, uh, any, uh, Northeast Metro nine sixteen updates?
Yeah, so the nine sixteen school board met last night, uh, for our February meeting. And we, um, February is Career and Technical Education Month. So we got to hear from the principal of the Career and Tech Ed programs for nine sixteen. Um, and we got to hear from, uh, a student who is a high school junior at Stillwater Schools. He's in the dental program. So he got to talk to us about what he does in that dental program and then what his plans are, um, to continue his education in the dental field. Um, so Moundsview has eighty-nine students that participate in career and technical education programs through nine sixteen. Um, and they offer twenty different programs, everything from, um, EMT to the dental program, to diesel mechanic programs. So they offer a wide variety of, uh, programs that our district students get to participate in. So, um, it was a really, um, nice to hear about all the things that go on over there. And then we talked about the, um, there are four intermediate school districts who come together to decide on their legislative priorities. Um, so we got to hear about the legislative priorities that impact our, um, intermediate school districts. Um, and then we will meet again, um, next month.
Great, thank you for the update. Um, now we have item seven dot three, uh, school board member updates. Uh, anybody have anything that they would like to share?
I mean, we've talked about it a lot tonight, but I, uh, had the opportunity to go to the SCC Music Festival for the very first time this year. Um, and I, I was absolutely blown away. And not, not just by the, the level of precision and heart, um, but also with the incredible diversity, how many different schools and how many, um, different types, um, of, of students. And just, my heart just exploded with, um, with just such a, uh, an incredible group of young humans, uh, out there doing their thing. And, you know, the arts and music are incredibly important. And, and so it was just all around very heartwarming. I had a chance to, to drag my husband along, uh, and he enjoyed it as much as I did. So, um, we will be going back next year and taking every opportunity we can um, to see the, the choir and orchestra and band and, uh, just wow, wow. Thank you to all the students and all the families, you know, for, for that commitment. We, we attempted to have both of our kids, um, do music lessons and such. And one made it through one summer program, thank goodness for the summer program. And she handed us her trumpet at the end and said she was finished. But our other daughter did years and years of, of violin. And, um, you know, my, my heart kind of breaks that, that she didn't continue that all the way through high school because what an experience. But those early years were hard on our ears. So thank you to the parents for putting up with that and getting through that so these students can, uh, perform like they did.
Thank you, Alyssa.
As long as we're talking about fantastic music programs in Moundsview Public Schools, the winter music of the night, um, is going to be Saturday, February fifteenth, at five o'clock at Irondale. Um, if you have not seen the winter drum line from Irondale, it is incredible. Um, and it, it will, it will not disappoint, I guarantee, it'll be worth the price of admission. So, um, Saturday, February fifteenth, five o'clock at Irondale.
Right. I'll just chime in, I know there's lots of programs going on in our schools right now. I've gotten several different requests to volunteer at different things. So, um, I just want to commend all of our educators who are doing those extra initiatives with their students. Um, I was able to go to Sunnyside Elementary yesterday for, I think, my fourth year and interview fifth grade students for their biz town roles. And it's always a highlight to read their resumes. Um, their, uh, what they, the things that they excel at and include on their resumes as ten-year-olds is just amazing. And, um, I was, I was actually really, really impressed by the students that I interviewed with, um, yesterday. Um, every single one of them thanked me for my time and thanked me for coming and participating. Um, so anyway, it's, it's really fun to be in the schools and see all these extra things. I know Edgewood's doing their history fair, um, right now. Anyway, there's just lots of extra things, and I appreciate so much when, um, the staff takes that extra time to plan those things, um, and that require, uh, outside the class preparation for them, so.
And piggybacking off of that, I know, I already went, but I'm like, I gotta go again. Um, on Sunday morning, I got to, um, judge the high school DECA competition for the first time. And that was also just amazing. So both of these things I got to do on Sunday.
Her birthday nonetheless.
Which, yes, also happened to be my birthday. And people were like, what, you were working on your birthday? I was like, there is no other place I'd rather be. Um, it was absolutely amazing and fun and, you know, all levels of, um, you know, preparedness and skill and, and experience there. Um, and I think that's one of the things that is so great is that we can support these, these students to, to start something and then to follow it through and to see the growth in four years is just incredible. So I begged them to please invite me back, uh, for next year to judge, uh, and they said they would. So, um, just, yeah, so much programming, so many opportunities, um, just, I love our district.
I agree, I was really pleased to hear when the students came to report that they're doing so many wonderful things, um, in the community. And I loved that they mentioned Black History Month, because I'd be remiss if I didn't say. Uh, it's, of course, Black History Month, and, and I want to acknowledge that uh, and, and encourage the folks in our community to go support a black business. Uh, you know, go eat at a, a restaurant that's, that's owned by, uh, members of our black community. Buy, purchase a book from a black author, um, expand, expand the horizons. But, um, yeah, do something to celebrate and enjoy this month, because, uh, it's certainly something to celebrate.
Amen.
I still have my Moundsview t-shirt that was made when my daughter took African-American history. And it says, "Black History is American History." And, um, so I, uh, I, I was actually going to wear it to the board meeting, but it's a little chilly out tonight. I opted for a jacket. But, uh, yeah, please do something to celebrate, because it is a, a phenomenal month. It's a short month, but, uh, get out there and celebrate.
Celebrate and learn, learn, learn something new this, this month.
Yeah.
And to build on something Yolanda said, I, uh, for MLK Day, the, uh, Moundsview and Shoreview Lions had an event over at Shoreview Community Center, and they made blankets for folks, they packed up, um, packets of laundry detergent, snack bags, folks who were less, for folks less fortunate. And, um, the great thing was, is there were just a ton of kids there. There was about ten, twelve kids from elementary school, a lot of the Valentine Hills kids I knew there, Moundsview kids, Irondale kids, they were there, uh, helping out. And, you know, it is, you know, it's January and February, you know, you'll find me at ice hockey. So, uh, the SCC Music Festival was fabulous. I, I, I love Fantasia by the band, I loved America the Beautiful by the choir, I loved Carmen by the orchestra, it was just fantastic. And also I attended, um, also full of Moundsview and Irondale kids volunteering something called Play for Patrick. It's a heart screening, uh, program in which, uh, people, um, uh, get screened for, um, heart defects that are very, very hard to find. And, um, it's supported by the Schoonover family, who's been a family business out here for a number of years and supports a lot of our youth activities in the community. But it was just great to see a bunch of volunteers there too, and, uh, that our, uh, schools, uh, serve the community in a lot of ways. So it was over at Highview, so that was wonderful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I also attended the SCC, um, Music Festival, and I too, um, caught a hockey game, um, the Irondale Boys Hockey Game a couple Saturdays ago. So, um, trying to get there, um, out in the public. So, um, thank you, everyone, for, uh, joining. If there's nothing else to come before the board, um, this meeting is adjourned.